Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 15, 2016. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance if you would please stand.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the good health that you blessed us with to be here today. Father, we want to remember and pray for this Turner family, and we pray for this family that you could give them peace and comfort during this time of loss. Father, we pray for those who are overseas serving us, and we pray for their families, Lord, and we just pray that you'd bring them home safely. Father, we also want to pray for our law enforcement and our emergency workers, and we pray, Lord, that you protect them and watch over them as they protect us. For you are the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
We move to the public comment session. Several folks have signed up to speak. I would ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes and that audience members not address either the board or the speaker unless recognized. So we'll begin in the order I received these. First up is John Wadsworth. Pardon? Can you hear me now? Okay.
My name is John Wadsworth. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I was not going to speak when I came today. I was just listening, but I got to thinking, well, while I'm here, why don't I say what's on my mind? I think everybody understands that the Haywood County schools have a serious situation right now. If you read in the paper, they're about $2.5 million short. There seems to be a lot of finger pointing. Everybody's, excuse me, everybody's pointing fingers to Raleigh or to the county or whatever, and nothing's getting done. And I think it's time to quit pointing fingers and try to come up with a solution. The reason I don't think the problem is in Raleigh is, you know, I've done some research. I've looked at the numbers, and believe me, I know that school employees, politicians, I mean, I'm an accountant. You can spend numbers any way you want to spend them. But what I've seen in the last three or four years, this past, this school year we're working at now, the total amount allocated from Raleigh to Haywood County is the most it's been in three or four years. The amount per student is somewhere this year, I'm not an expert on this, but it's about $5,400. I think that's the most it's been in five or six years. So I don't think our problem is Raleigh. I think our problem is Haywood County, and I think we have got to come together to solve this problem. If you look at what's happened in the last 10 years, and you've all seen these numbers, and I may be a little bit off, but we've lost 750 students in 10 years. Okay? The funding is based on the per student, so the state gives us like $5,400 per student. And if you look at that 750 students that we've lost over 10 years, that comes to about $3.8 million of funding that we don't have to fund our schools anymore. So to me, that is the real issue. It's not somebody in Raleigh did something or somebody over here did something. Our student, you know, our young folks are not staying here, and the population's dropping, and I would speak to the school board and tell them, they need to be looking at a really good strategic plan over the next five years because I think the numbers are going to continue to drop. So with that being said, what I'd like to propose to the county commissioners, because I think the county commissioners and the school board have got to come together on this issue. I don't think this is a Raleigh issue. I don't think this is a Washington DC issue. I think it's a local issue we've got to take care of. So I would ask that the school board and the county commissioners, and they may have already done this, but get together, get out of the box, and figure out a way to solve this. In the short term, what I'd ask the commissioners to do is to put a six-month moratorium on any capital spending until you get together and solve this problem. And I noticed, I just happened to notice in the notes today, you know, there's 2.1 million for the, what is this, the emergency service management area. You know, I saw in the paper a couple of weeks ago that there's, I can't remember, $2 to $3 million for the new animal rescue place. All these things are great things, but they're not things that have to be done. I mean, I think we need to be thinking about our students and our teachers. And so I ask that you guys consider, put a moratorium on this, get together, and let's figure out what we're going to do. Because I think it's going to take more money from the county. That might be something you want to hear, but I think that's what's going to have to be, and we're going to have to really figure out how to prioritize our spending. You know, I see there's a tier one spending where that's for safety, environmental, things that have to be done. There's kind of a tier two spending, things that must be done, and there's a tier three, which are nice things to be done, like, like the emergency building, nice. The dog rescue place, nice thing to be done. We all want to do that kind of stuff, but right now is not the time to do it until we solve the problem in our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, next is Vicki Rogers.
Hi there, Vicki Rogers, Francis Farm Road. We've been talking a bit, I know. First of all, I do want to say, apparently according to your attachment for this particular meeting, it looks like you have moved forward with a document that talks about the moratorium for outdoor firing ranges. So thank you very much. Appreciate that tremendously, and thank you for looking at all the information we gave you. Now, I'm going to step forward just a second more, though, because we've still got, our community has the indoor shooting range to deal with, and I guess I'm just going to have to say, Mr. Sarals, Mr. Ensley, I sense that maybe you all have some pull here, but if mountain ranges would consider building that indoor range on the industrial property that they do have at their disposal, I think everybody would be happy. I realize there's been money given to Mrs. Betty Lewis for the land that she's using for this shooting range now or going to be used. When you guys turn around and do this landfill situation, and I don't envy you that, but you're going to be giving her, again, more money, which in turn gives Mr. Morrow further money than to proceed with his business. I want him to have his business. It's not that. We need that. There's very, lots of people are interested in shooting and practicing. The Sheriff's Department needs it. I just think he needs to be convinced to put it at that industrial site and get it back in the city and get it away from just a little farming community. So I hope that you all can maybe talk to Mr. Morrow, and maybe this can be settled in some other way, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Josie Rathbone.
Good evening. I'm a property owner on Palmer Road, and so I'm here today to talk about the, to be in favor of the moratorium put on the shooting range. Like I said, we have had, we were building a house there, and that was, that's our dream home, and I have a 17-month-old daughter that is going to be living there as well, and so it is my job to make sure that she is safe. I have provided for you all pictures that was taken at another, at another firing range within Haywood County. So you can see within that the holes that are in the top of the overhang, and you can see that accidents do happen. So I just ask that you keep that in mind whenever thinking about the safety of the residents. So this is not really a gun issue. This is a safety issue. I think this would be a good thing somewhere else. I just don't think that this is the right place for this to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Susan Sacks. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I just want to tell you, I encourage the moratorium, but I suggest that we think about making, or taking this opportunity to think about a larger planning effort for Haywood County. And I don't know if you all remember the Catalouche Wilderness Resorts that was back in 2008, where they wanted to develop in Jonathan Valley. And at that time, a group of community members got together with the Western North Carolina Alliance, which is now called Mountain True, and created a, what was then called a subdivision ordinance. And we never gave it to the county commissioners because that particular development died down and the group kind of disformed, but we still have a draft of this ordinance. It is non-binding. It is a way to think about development, and whether it's going to be a shooting range or a large development that may change the character of this community that we all love, I just encourage you all to think about maybe revisiting that plan, and I can certainly get it to you from Mountain True, excuse me. And I do have actually the, kind of the cover letter that we were going to submit with that plan, which just kind of summarizes what it's about. So if you want that, it's just a one-page that I brought with me. But I think it's a good opportunity, rather than reacting to each individual thing as it happens, for us to think as communities within Haywood County, what do we want to see in Haywood County? What is the character we want to preserve? Mountain True has also started doing community-based planning, where different communities develop their own plans, and communities that don't want planning just don't do it. But it sounds to me like there are communities in Haywood County that might be interested in doing that, so if you want any information, I can just give you this.
Just if you would give it to Mr. Dove, and he can get it to us.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Nelson.
Good evening, and I thank you once again for hearing our concerns on the moratorium in the Rackliff Cove community. I'm also grateful that Mr. Morrow is here this evening and has not left the building so that he can hear some of our comments and realize that we're not here actively aggressive or pointed in our views. But for those that oppose us in trying to work with this moratorium to protect land in the community, we want you to know that we're not against hunting, we're not against the need for this facility, we're just against the piece of property that is being looked at for such. We may or may not have to live with an indoor commercial retail shooting range in that community. We pray not, but we realize the laws may not be on our side. But we hope that we have invested our time to, for this county and for you, the board members, to begin looking at the land use ordinance that could possibly help us and other communities. In the New Testament, God, Jesus has asked, "Who is my neighbor?" Well, the neighbors that I've been standing up with on this issue are my neighbors. The neighbors that may be against us and live in and around the rest of Haywood County are also my neighbors. I think we all have stewardship over where we've been placed and the things that we're supposed to look after, land being one of them. So I encourage you to continue, though it may be difficult, to look at land use ordinances, especially the moratorium on this particular outdoor shooting range, and to protect other areas. I doubt any of you that are for this would want to have your crying baby disrupted by outdoor shooting, or an Alzheimer's patient who might possibly get agitated due to constant noise, possibly someone just sick that would like the relief from the noise to be able to rest appropriately, or for your children to be able to be free-range children and play in an entire neighborhood and not just an isolated piece of property within their own yard. I know this has been difficult because we've been with you four times. It's been difficult for us, too. We appreciate what you're doing for us, and we thank you for listening, and I just hope that those of you that are out there that don't live in our community will take into consideration, if this were happening to you, you might not want it right where it's going to be located either, but there are other places that we can establish one, and we know there is a need for one. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Henson.
My, my issue tonight's not about the gun range, but, you know, I would be for, you know, I grew up here, and I'm for guns, and I never knew any different, and we were free-range children, and free-range guns were around, but anyway, besides that, I'm here about the bond, and the, the most important things that I think could be with a county would be, would be to deny the Lord Jesus. And we've already, well, I've not, but most of y'all have kind of denied that about, you know, in the Bible. The Bible says, Matthew 10:33, "Whosoever shall deny me before men, him also I shall deny before my Father," which is in heaven. The number two thing, I think, that can affect a nation is, is the economy. And the economy first starts in a county, then it goes to a state, then it goes to a nation. You have to start in the county with everything, and people think it's in Washington. It's not. It's right here in this county. If you could change one county and get enough of a movement, you could challenge a state, and a state would change a nation, and that's what would have to happen. Wanting to borrow $2 billion or put it up for a bond on a vote, and Nicole Revels come up here at the last meeting. Nicole's a single mom. Nicole don't have no big amount of money. She struggles every day, but she's really concerned about the state, and she's really into it, and I know that she changed y'all's mind to vote that time, but now it's back up because y'all have pulled transportation out. Well, transportation was never in there the first time, and y'all hadn't recognized it, and y'all was going to vote for it. Or I feel y'all was going to vote for it. Now, y'all might say you weren't, but it would have passed the last time, so you didn't even really know what was in the bond and was going to put it through. So first thing is to all the people of this county, that's wrong. You need to know what's in this. It's $2 billion. And if y'all are saying that you need the $2 billion, and, and, and most of the politicians saying we won't have to raise taxes, it's kind of like I said about the hole in the roof of dumping one bucket of sand and then going to 18 buckets a day, is if you can't pay for it with what you're taking in now, how can you say that you can pay $4 billion back at least without raising taxes? How, how's that possible? It has to come from somewhere. You know, it's so, so important in this county that we get this, get this right, and this come out of a Republican House, and, you know, I'm here as a Republican chairman and telling you how to crazy. And, and y'all, we got to pay as we go, or y'all are going to be shutting every school in the county down. We don't have nothing left. And, you know, on this bond, it's, it's, there's 60%, 66% of this will be divvied out to NC college systems. Hundreds of millions of dollars will go to parks, zoos, and other projects across the state. And, you know, this is, this is politicians handling this, and you cannot take a chance with this, and this is really important, Mark. This is really important, and, you know, we're not getting paid to come here and do this, and I just wish y'all would think about some of this stuff. You can't tell the people, and please don't listen to them, to think that this bond is a good thing. You can't pay back $4 billion and not raise taxes when you can't even come up with $2 billion that you need now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the last speaker will be Debbie King.
Good evening. I'm Debbie King, and I'd like to just say real briefly about the Declaration of Restricted Covenants for Beaver Dam Industrial Park. I believe if you read those, that you will find that a gun range cannot be built there. But the reason that I'm here tonight was to read the Haywood County Republican Executive Committee's resolution that was passed. Kenneth ran out of time, so I'll go ahead and finish what he had started. It was a resolution in opposition of the Connect North Carolina statewide bond referendum, whereas the Connect NC bond proposal seeks voter approval to borrow $2 billion on the primary election ballot in March 2016, whereas the North Carolina GOP party platform in Article 5 state government states, "We believe that government at all levels must not spend money it does not have." Whereas we believe bond money is not free money, but rather debt with heavy interest left to a future generation of taxpayers to repay without their consent. Whereas this bond proposal includes no funds for K through 12 education and no funds for transportation improvements, the $2 billion will go into a fund, Connect NC, that is chaired by a whole host of politicians in order to disperse towards special interests. 66% will be divvied out to the North Carolina college systems. Hundreds of millions of dollars will go to parks, zoos, and other projects across NC. And whereas we believe that if an item is important enough to be funded, then it should be budgeted, and our elected officials held accountable for the spending of North Carolina tax dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Haywood County Republican Executive Committee hereby formally opposes the approval of the North Carolina-North Carolina bond and authorizes the chairman of this committee to make this position known to voters, adopted the 14th day of January 2016 at a meeting of the Haywood Republican Executive Committee. This was a standing-room-only meeting that we held, and I hate that this even had to be brought here tonight, but you do have it on your agenda tonight that you're going to be passing or presenting a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who didn't sign up who would care to, to speak?
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak without signing up, but unlike the other person who said they just decided once they got here, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to-
If you would, give us your name for the record.
Yes, Janie Higgins.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. But anyway, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Morrow for being here tonight, to hear us, and I just wanted to take this last, could be my last opportunity, to stand before you all and express my opinions and my desires about the shooting range as a whole. Like, like it has been said throughout several people, that we're not against the shoot, a shooting range in Haywood County. We're, we're against the shooting range being on Palmer Road. And the reason, the main reason for that is safety, and we were free-range children. My, my parents, myself and my sister and my children were all free-range, and they could play and run in the hills, and, and there was no safety issue whatsoever. We cannot allow our grandchildren to do the same if this happens. And I have known the Felmit family all of my life. I, I knew Jewel's grandmother, had much respect for her. She was, she upheld the community in all situations. I know she would never have allowed anything like this to happen, and I'm just asking him to reconsider it once more. And I would like to ask the commissioners, any of you who may be friends with Mr. Morrow, if you have any influence on him whatsoever, if you would encourage him, if he has a piece of property that is in the industrial or commercial area, that he reconsider building it there, which I'm not opposed to at all. I don't think there's really anyone here that does oppose it. We, we need it for the economy. It would be great to have another business in Haywood County, but I would just like to ask you, please, one more time, to think about it. If it was in your front yard, how would you, how would you feel about it? And it is in my front yard. My husband and I lived in the very first house, and it is an issue. It's an eyesore. It's a safety situation. I won't be able to allow my grandchildren to run free range, and there's just many other reasons why, and I will include that right at the end in our close. But the Juneleska School is less than one mile from this proposed site. My two grandchildren go to school there now. My, our youngest daughter teaches kindergarten at Juneleska Elementary for the last 15 years. It puts those people in jeopardy also, and we, we just feel like that there's much more suitable place. I thank you for your time. I appreciate your reconsideration of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. My name is Paul Jaeger. I live in Waynesville. With regard to the proposed moratorium on approval of commercial outdoor shooting ranges, to my knowledge, no such outdoor shooting range has been proposed. So what we have here is a solution in search of a problem. Are we to have the county commission to propose a moratorium and to regulate anything that I might decide that my neighbor might someday do? This doesn't make any sense to me. Thomas Jefferson told us, "The government that governs least governs best." I would hope the commissioners would take that into consideration as they consider whether or not and how they're going to proceed on this issue. With regard to the Connect NC bond, I oppose this. I urge the commission to reconsider your resolution support of this issue. The legislature has passed a law, or proposed a statute, I'm sorry, they've passed a statute which proposes that we have this bond issue if it's approved on a referendum. While the distribution of the proceeds of that bond issue have been determined, the statute also says that the legislature can decide a different allocation of those funds at some time in the future. Furthermore, $300 million of that money is simply allocated to water and sewer projects without telling us where that money is going to be spent. So we have no idea. I recognize that there are funds to be spent from this bond issue that could benefit us here in Western North Carolina. However, I don't believe this is the way to go about funding those things. As pointed out earlier by others, this is basically burdening the citizens of North Carolina for 20, 25, 30 years, something like that. The statement that it won't raise taxes is quite questionable. Finally, I would ask the commission to consider how you would expect the people of Haywood County to respond if you were to suggest a bond issue with funds to be allocated by a committee appointed by the chairman of the county commission, and without a solid, firm, unbreakable definition of how those funds are to be allocated and spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? If not, then we'll move on from the public comment session and move, the three items that were raised today in the, in the comments, two of which will be addressed later in specific old business and new, new business items, so we'll, we'll talk about those. The ones on the school funding, the, Haywood County is in the top 20% in the state of North Carolina in school funding, so we, we do a very good job, I believe, in, in funding our, our local schools. As the gentleman correctly pointed out, a large part of the problem is the fact that there's just fewer, fewer children to educate, and funding is on a per pupil basis from the state and, and the county. You mentioned the EMS, for example. You know, when you have a, when you have a capital project, we usually borrow the money. So it's, it's, it's not like, well, okay, it's, it's $2 million. You don't save all that. You would save 1/40 of it. Is that about what, 20 years? Julie, financing?
I'm sorry, what are you asking me?
Okay, the financing on the emergency services EMS building is 20 years?
Yeah, no, it's 10 years.
10 years, okay. So, you know, these other expenses that the schools have are recurring expenses. You'll have them every single year, and they were 2.4 million, I believe, short for this coming year, and that number will, unless they address it, will be there every- unless they address it, will be there every single year. So you would have huge amounts of appropriations be required in order to address that, and the decision or not to close that school will rest with the duly-elected school board officials. It's not something that the commissioners have the authority to order or to do. That is a board that's elected by statute to conduct the business of public education. Commissioners do not have that authority. But as far as meeting with the school board, we have a meeting this spring, we have a meeting every year with them about budget matters in a work session, and we'll have that this year as well. So, okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Michael? Kevin?
No, I'd reiterate some of the things you said about the school, and we maintain constant communications with the school board and meet with them and speak with them about the funding formula that we have set up. And we've talked about this before, but a lot of systems, they don't have a formula set up between their school board and the county, and so there are meetings that go on and on and public comment wherein 10, how many years ago? My gosh, 14 years ago, we agreed to a formula with them, and each year we say, "Are you okay with the funding formula? Do you like those numbers?" And so far, it's been positive. We've looked at that each time, and then if we've had to rework it, we've done so. So I don't know, and we've had discussions with them this time as well, and like Mark said, I mean, we're in the top 20%, which, when you count the number of school systems in the state, I think that's pretty, it's sufficient, and I think the children, the education that they're getting, and the numbers I think we provided in the state, the Haywood County school system's a little bit higher than what we actually fund them with as far as percentage-wise in the state. So when it comes down to the school, and I know that there have been some things set out in public about the commissioners, but there's not been that much brought here, that, like Mark said, is not really our decision as to what they do with their facilities or what they close or how they close or how they manage it. But, you know, they've been dealt a pretty difficult hand with the number of students that have dropped, and then we just don't have as many students in our school system as we used to have. And there have been other things that affected them as well, and it's decisions that they have to make. And in the event that there are, you know, viable things that they need to come to us about, they have an opportunity to, and we meet with them, and I'm sure we'll hear those.
You know, I could just repeat kind of what Kurt said. When I was superintendent of Haywood County Schools, I worked with, before we had a funding formula, we were placed with other agencies, and we competed for our dollars. I first, I remember being lectured an hour and a half. What are you doing up here asking for, Marion, for more money? When we got the funding formula, it all changed. We know what we're gonna get from year to year. We can figure out now, right, Ira, what we're gonna get for next year. The losing students is working against us. I agree with it. There's 750. You're gonna lose money, and then you get into having to make hard decisions. You can't continue like you're going. When you're losing students, you're losing money. The state sent me a lot, my every spring, telling me how many teachers I would get for the following year. I think now it's 334, something like it. We know how many teachers, and then we take our local budget and we make a decision on how many teachers we're gonna fund out of local budget. But again, my main point is, we don't want to go back to having schools compete with other agencies in the county. What would happen, we'd end up giving them very similar increases, a percentage. The school system, am I right, got a higher percentage this year? So I feel good about the funding of the schools, and I hate that we're having to make those tough decisions. We don't have as many children born in Haywood County now. We stagnate. We don't have a lot of people moving in with children. So that works against us. When I was assistant principal at Pesca High School in 1971, that was before Kenneth Henson, we had 1,000 kids in 10, 11, and 12. You remember, 1,000 students. Now we don't have, we're lucky to have 1,000 students in grades 9, 10, 11, and 12. So our big problem is, we're losing students. Families are not as big as they used to be. Thank you.
Mark, I just wanted to make one comment also. We need to find solutions with the school board, and I think y'all are meet with them. But what we've got to do is get our ADM numbers up, you know, the students. And, I mean, I thought, I think I even read somewhere where, I know in Haywood County, we homeschooled our kids for about 10 years. And I think one thing the school board could do to maybe get the ADM numbers up is to work with homeschoolers to maybe offer classes. I don't know if they can or not, Michael, but some school districts do that. And if the state would allow, and maybe the state needs to change the law to where if those kids wanted to take Spanish or some certain class that maybe the homeschool parents aren't, you know, really educated in, they might could do that. I even thought about, you know, biology classes, things like that, things that are specialized. And maybe if they were a couple hours there, they could count, and they had five kids, three kids do that, that could count as one or something. But I think we've got to find solutions to get that number up, because everything's based on that number. Our numbers, our funding formulas based on the number of students. So, you know, I hate that we're seeing the numbers go down. I never thought I'd see that here, but we've just got to find creative solutions to try to get those numbers up. And there are about 900 homeschoolers in the county, I think. I think I read that somewhere. So there are things they can do, maybe even work with the Christian school to maybe, where they could maybe take some part-time classes. I don't know, but we do need to be creative, and that's what I wanted to say. We need to be creative to get their ADM numbers up in a positive direction.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move then to administrative and agency reports. We have a presentation by our finance director, Julie Davis, wearing the Smoky Mountain Center.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm bringing to you what I do every quarter. This is the Smoky Mountain Fiscal Monitoring Report. The report I have tonight is for the period, the quarter that ended December 31st, 2015. And you'll see in your report, their total revenues through December 31st were $191,889,913 with total expenditures of $185,811,192 for a net gain of $6,78,721.
Any questions, Drew? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, Greg West with refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
Good evening, commissioners. As far as the January 2, 16 refunds, releases, amendments, there's nothing out of the ordinary to report this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I skipped ahead a little bit. I meant to add on the adjustment to the agenda, the North Carolina Geocachers Organization, Kevin Ensley has a proposal and a request to the board. So we'll add that to the, as the fourth item. We, are there any other adjustments? Okay, we've had the opportunity to review the February 1st, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Next then, we would have our tax collections update. Mike Matthews, our tax collector's with us.
Good evening, commissioners. As of January 31st of this year, we are at 90.6%. It's about a tenth of a percent up from last year. We're at $34,919,362. It's just over $2 million dollar-wise up from last year, but the pool's a little bigger, so. And as far as our delinquent collections, we are at $553,266 from 2014. That's at 44.89%. And I know we were going to discuss also the advertising.
Yeah, is there any questions on the numbers?
No, I mean, that's a good report. It's the highest it's been since 2008.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and talk about our obligation to publish and advertise tax liens under the North Carolina General Statute 105-369, so.
Ira had mentioned the 15th of April.
Yeah.
If it's okay with you guys, I'd like to do, or go for the 13th of April. That way, it puts it on Wednesday. If we decide to go with the Mountaineer and Smoky Mountain News, or however we do that, it gives us options with both of them as well, because the 15th is a Friday.
Objection to changing the date, two days?
Yeah, it gives us options for both papers. And what I'd like to do, if we're gonna advertise on the 13th, what we normally try to do is set a date that if you have the payments in by, we have a chance to pull you out of the paper. So we'll do it like an in-by date, or to have the payments in the office by the 6th, then they'll give us time to pull out whatever names by the 13th.
Okay, so then the order will, Ira, you'll take care of getting the order printed up tomorrow?
Yes, I will get an order, and if you're acceptable with that, the order would say that the payments would need to be in by the 6th to avoid publication, and the publication be on the 13th. I think that's what Mr. Matthews is requesting.
And by law, the publication has to be in a local newspaper of general circulation.
Right, correct.
So we'll take care of that then. And if there's no objection, the board authorized me to sign that order we do every year, advertising the tax liens. Okay, any questions, observations?
Thanks, Gus.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kevin?
Okay, a group has contacted us called the Geocachers, and what they do, it's a national group, and they're wanting to rent a fairgrounds for a week, a weekend in 2017. I believe it's in May, sometime in May of 2017. And they'll be, Geocachers evidently, I think that's how you pronounce it, they, it's a, they use GPS to find, it's like a little treasure hunt, and evidently, it's, a lot of young people know about it. I didn't know that much about it, so. But anyway, they're wanting to come to Haywood County. It'll be about 3,500 people, they think, that weekend, and they just wanted a letter from our board wanting to encourage that they were coming to an area that wanted them here. And also, I talked with Lynn Collins with TDA, and Lynn was familiar with them, and she was very excited that they were coming. And one of the things that they requested when they do come is they'd like to maybe try to find some local music on some of the events that they have here and other activities. They came and looked at the fairgrounds. There were about six individuals. They videotaped the fairground area, and then they went to Waynesville and videotaped Main Street. They're gonna be making a decision, I think, towards the end of this month or the 1st of March, and they just needed a letter from us, or they would like to have had a letter from us, and we've prepared one that is, you know, kind of welcoming them into our area. So that's kind of what it's all about.
Okay. Well, 3,500 people, and a lot of hotel rooms and a lot of meals to be served, so if there's no objection, then I will sign the letter welcoming them to Haywood County. Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. All right, that concludes our consent agenda. At this point, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, the first item of old business is requesting approval of an ordinance imposing a moratorium on the permitting and approval for construction, establishment, and development of commercial outdoor sport shooting ranges in unincorporated areas outside any municipal planning jurisdiction in Haywood County, North Carolina. Recognize Ira Dove.
Probably the simplest thing in this moratorium order was prepared by the county attorney, and I submit this to you. Would you like me to read it in its entirety? It is published online.
You can highlight some parts if you want, but there's no point in reading the whole thing, I don't think.
Essentially, this is a, we had the public hearing at the last one, and then we have had concerned citizens speak at both meetings in January. This would be a moratorium to last no more than 60 days. It actually would expire April 15th, if you choose to do this, April 15th, 2016, to allow time to determine if there should be any ordinances created regarding outdoor sport shooting ranges. Again, this is, this would impact outdoor sport shooting ranges during the moratorium period. It would prohibit the issuance of building permits, improvement permits, wastewater construction, or any land disturbing permits related to commercial outdoor sport shooting ranges. It would not impact individuals shooting on their properties. It doesn't impact any hunting. It doesn't impact non-commercial uses. And the county attorney drafted this.
Okay. And I'll restate, it's a temporary moratorium-
It's temporary, expiring April 15th.
-to give the county time to research whether or not an ordinance is necessary. Comments, observations, questions?
No, I mean, I think we've discussed it and gone over this thoroughly, and one of the reasons that this was brought up is because there wasn't, one of the meetings before Mr. Morrow came and indicated what he planned on doing, there was no indication that there was not going to be an outdoor range there. And due to the closest in proximity of the neighborhoods and the schools, there was some concern about the fact that we do not have anything that prohibits an outdoor gun range, or we have no control over that. And so if any one person came in and there's some question about whether, if you applied for a permit at the time of the filing for the permit, if there was a moratorium looked at at that point in time, could it prohibit an outdoor gun range? And I think there was some question about that, and so therefore, we started talking about this moratorium. And that is why it is before us now, and I'm in support of this moratorium. I think I tried to, I brought that issue up, because I don't think that it's appropriate for property in the county, for any property in the county, to be subject to an outdoor gun range without being in compliance with some type of ordinance and looking at the area and the surroundings. And so that's why that's here before us now, and I'm in support of it.
Just want to make the comment that there were some phone calls before the last meeting. There was some concerns with some people here about, you know, the public comments section, or the public hearing and the opportunity to come and speak. Some people had to work during the day, so we extended it to this meeting and invited people to come in and that, you know, had the opportunity to express their opinions on that, although most of the people that I had conversations with seemed to be very at ease with the moratorium or what we were trying to do. And I'm going to say it one more time, this has nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with private use of your own property and, you know, recreational shooting. So that's it.
I'd just say it is for commercial, outdoor, commercial ranges, and that's what it's for. And people, if you have, you know, if you're on your private property, you can fire away. So, you know, it's not going to affect that at all. Really, it shouldn't affect anything other than if somebody's wanting to build one. Thought it was interesting that Jewel, when he came in, he's very much in favor of this, because if you build one, he wants to make sure we do it right. There are a lot of environmental issues with lead, I didn't realize, but evidently, it leaches into the ground when you have a large amount of it. So then, you know, having someone, I mean, Jewel made three or four good, well, actually five or six really good points at the last meeting, so, and he understands gun ranges because he's doing one, an indoor, so, and he sees the need for it. So that kind of helped me make up my mind. I do want to reiterate, this is a commercial outdoor range, and that's what this is for.
That's the only cause I got, people worried that they couldn't use their property like they would like. So emphasize again, it is a, we're talking about a commercial outdoor range, not what you do with your own property. I think, Kevin, you're the first one to bring it up. You were worried, can you go on your property, you know, like you'd wish?
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, then we'd entertain a motion that the Haywood County Commercial Outdoor Sport Shooting Range Development- Outdoor Sport Shooting Range Development Moratorium Ordinance be approved?
Summon.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Okay, thank you. And you'll, you'll work on, uh, ascertaining the appropriateness of additional, uh, regulations that may or may not be needed?
Yes, yes. Um, the county attorney, Mr. Kelly, and I will continue to work on that.
Okay, very good. Okay, the second item of old business is a consideration of a resolution in support of North Carolina Governor Pat McCourty's Connect NC Bond proposal. Uh, we'll continue with Ira.
Yes, uh, this is the resolution. Uh, again, I believe this is also online, but this is short enough where I may just go ahead so that people know what is being said. Uh, whereas North Carolina has seen its population grow by 2 million people since 2000, and there is a need to expand and repair infrastructure so that we can meet the demands of our growing population, continue the development of new jobs, and grow our economy. And whereas the primary jo, driver of job creation is our higher education system of community college and universities. And whereas $1.25 billion will be invested across the state in capital construction, repair, and renovation. And whereas the beneficiaries include 17 colleges and universities, together with investment in new construction repairs and renovations to all of the community college, of those Haywood Community College receiving $2,831,380 and $110 million for Western Carolina University. And whereas $309 million in loans and grants will be invested in sewer and water projects statewide. And whereas $100 million will be investment in 48 state parks to include the mountain to sea trail, which runs along the balsams in Haywood County, and the North Carolina Zoo to repair and renovate, as well as update select facilities to make them more accessible to children with disabilities and veterans with disabilities. And whereas $180 million will be invested in agriculture, which contributes $78 billion to the state's economy, which accounts for 17% of the state's revenue. And whereas $70 million will be investing in modernizing National Guard facilities, which will also make the Guard eligible for additional federal funding as North Carolina moves towards more centralized facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners do hereby support the $2 billion Connect NC Bond that invests in North Carolina's future.
Comments, questions, Kevin?
I ju, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, the good thing about this is this is just a support for resolution for this. Uh, I mean, I'll be voting for it, and the good thing is each citizen can vote for it. This is just not, we basically raised awareness. There was the lady last time here, evidently she's part of a grassroots group that is, that is against the bond, and she was able to come up and give her, um, comments, and they got broadcast over the television, uh, channel, and for everybody in the county to see. And then we're bringing it up again, so that, and just bring awareness to it, so the public can be somewhat educated on it. But the reason I'm voting for it is, uh, and also our local delegation all voted for this. Michelle Presnell voted for it, uh, Joe Samqueen voted for it, and Senator Jim Davis voted for it. So our house reps and our senator have voted for the bond. Um, uh, we get, and of course, the, the bond talks about, uh, the community college and the, um, Western Carolina will be getting, uh, I believe Western's building a science building, I think I've heard that, I'm not sure what exactly. But, um, the one, the one thing I like about it is the water and sewer grants. We've not had any grant, it's hard to find grants for water and sewer, and these will be competitive grants. I know, Paul, you had asked about that, and they are competitive to where people can, um, you know, you don't know where they're going, because you've got to compete for it. And so you better have a good project, uh, to be able to get the funding. So I, I'm glad to see that we have a funding mechanism to where if we have a good water and sewer project, uh, that grant, those grants will be available. I'm not saying there's no grants available, but this will be another avenue we can try. Also, NC State, if you noticed in the grant, there's also agriculture, there's going to be some money spent there, and NC State will be getting, I'm sure it will be getting some of that. And NC State has a lot to do with our research farm over on Raccoon Road. Um, so we're hoping that, that will help that endeavor also. And then along with the low interest rates, the rates are as low as they've ever been, and I think this is a good time. If we're going to do something like this, this is a good, you know, now's a good time to do it. So that'd be my comments.
Comment, uh, you know, throughout the history of North Carolina, especially the last or my, uh, uh, voting time, or, uh, you know, North Carolina has, has tended to, uh, you know, put these bonds out, and, you know, to, for the voters to, to, uh, vote, either to vote for or to, or to vote against. Um, uh, most of them have been, uh, successful, and, uh, most of them have helped move North Carolina forward. Uh, I think this one is going to do that, uh, give some much-needed revenue for some, uh, things that needs to be done. Uh, the last one was talk, you know, that we had, still had the transportation part, which was part of this bond when it first started, they took it out. That was one of the, uh, one thing that I was very disappointed in, that they did not leave the transportation in, because North Carolina needs a lot of work on their infrastructure, their bridges and all. Uh, so I would have liked to have seen that in there also. But, um, I think that, uh, this is, you know, uh, an issue. Like I said, if you're for it, you're for it. If you're not, you're not. You've got an opportunity to, to, uh, you know, make that choice. And, uh, but it's got a, a lot of good things in there. It talked about that, uh, the loans and grants for the sewer and water project. Well, you know, it's, it's got loans, low-interest loans in there, and that will continue to keep that money available, uh, for, in the future, for, uh, additional, uh, sewer and water projects that, that is much needed. Uh, we're, so anyway, I, and I am in support of it.
Kirk, you? Bill?
You know, I, I, I've thought about this for a long time over the years. Uh, it'd be nice if we could have pay-as-you-go, but I, I never can see Haywood County us saving up enough money to build a building. And I can't see how the state could build up a rainy day fund, Mike, to do all they need to do. I, I think, we all hate to borrow, but we all have, you know, when I bought my first home, I had to borrow some money. Didn't have any money. If I had waited, uh, to accumulate that money, I don't know what I'd be living in now. I guess I'd be renting and just giving money away. So I think it's the best alternative. I wish that, you know, we could go pay-as-you-go, but I can't see that ever happening, because we barely meet our budgets now, locally and statewide, barely meet our budgets. So I, I think this is the way to go.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I've learned a little bit more about it, um, this evening. Um, I guess, and I'm not certain, why has the county, we, we've just been asked to approve this? Who, do you know who's asked us to approve this?
Western Carolina, Haywood Community College, um...
I mean, if they formally said, "Haywood County, will you approve this, um, resolution?"
I've had talks with people from them. I don't have formal resolution from them, but yes, I've had talks.
I mean, I see the president of the college, I mean, we've got some things on for the college tonight, but I, I mean, I see that she's back there. Um, I guess one of the things, I look at this, and I, and I think about in, in history, some of the things that have happened. And, you know, when you, when you see something like this, you start thinking about the New Deal and Roosevelt, and, um, some of the things that did to, to jumpstart the economy, because, and there's a couple of things, because I, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm not certain whether I want to support that or support this or not, but the first reason I don't mind supporting it is because, just like Kevin said, it's one vote, and this is going to be a bond, and it's going to be placed on the ballot, and so the people in North Carolina can decide whether they want to approve this or not. So, you know, this is not a vote where we're deciding anything, we're just saying we're going to be in support of this. This is a resolution, we're going to be in support of it. The s, the second reason is, is you have to continue to maintain and repair and expand your infrastructure. You can't, you can't provide things. I mean, you go and look at other states that don't do that. Um, and, uh, and, and those are, those are poor states, or less educated states. There's, there's a lot of problems in those states. And, and I think the, the third thing is, is that for every single project that is going to be completed with this money, and, and I don't know that they really, it says the primary driver is, is job creation, i, is higher education, but the fact of the matter is that the people doing this work are going to be employed, and there's going to be a lot of jobs created just by this work that's going to be done, uh, which I think that will help the economy in North Carolina as well. So, I mean, I know I didn't have to say that much, and, and, but I, I, I think I'm going to vote in support of the resolution because of those reasons.
Uh, I support it as well. I think it's, it's good for our region and our county and our citizens. So, if there's nothing further, then would entertain a motion that the resolution in support of the Connect North Carolina Bond proposal be approved?
So move?
Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Thank you. Okay, let's take about a five-minute recess, and, um, we'll change the tape, and, and I know some folks that came for other matters may want to leave if so, but if not, you're certainly welcome to stay. We have returned from our recess, and we will now, uh, move to the new business section of our agenda. The first, uh, item of new business is, uh, approval of a project change order, uh, by, uh, Haywood Community College in the public training facility property, uh, that they have out there. So, um, Breck Lanning is with us, and Scott, I see he's with us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Um, just to give you a brief update on the, the Public Services Training Facility project, it's well underway. We're about 75% done with the rough grading, and, um, majority of the storm drain infrastructure is in, and that has led us to the, uh, the field order here that you see today, and we're requesting approval, uh, in the amount not to exceed $94,000 for that change order. And that is for, um, removal of unsuitable soils that has been determined by our third-party soils testing engineer on the project. We kind of anticipated this to an extent. Um, we were just, uh, a little bit unclear at the, in the beginning. We did have some soil testing done. Those cores showed varying soil conditions across the site, and that did show up as we, we started to do our grading. So, uh, we're requesting this to be paid from our construction contingency. Um, and our Board of Trustees did approve this on February 1st board meeting. And I'll let Scott Donald of PFA Architects give you a little bit more of a description about, about that change order.
Thanks for having us here. I'm Scott with PFA Architects in Asheville, and been working with Haywood Community College for a number of years now. And, and what Breck said is true, that we did have a soils report, geotechnical engineering, and basically this, um, repair is a remediation for the unsuitable soil. And, and the cost of the unit prices in the change order are right in line with what the Geotech is recommending on site. Uh, there's three areas of, of, uh, if you look at the last page, there's a map of our site, and you'll see the three yellow, uh, shapes on there, and that's basically the, most of where the unsuitable soil is. And it's anywhere from four feet to six feet deep. And as you get closer to the, the transit facility, it's actually deeper there, and that's where we're putting in the new exit for the site. So that's where they're, um, they actually sunk a trico in that area. Uh, it was about six feet deep, and, um, but, but they are, everything's being verified as the work's being done by BLE. So we, you know, we trust the numbers, and, um, and we have people on site daily. So this is a not to exceed 94,000. And if you look at the unit prices on the third page, you'll, you'll notice that they don't quite add up, but if you use the markup unit prices, it adds up to 93,565. So we, we basically ca, now, we tried to get this as an allowance built into the construction drawings, because we knew there was soil, bad soils out there, and state construction would not let us just randomly put a number in the, in the specs, but we probably would have assumed more than what we had in there, which was 2,000 yards. So it was kind of a guess. Uh, so we weren't able to, to estimate that until I started digging.
Scott, is the, um, bad soil an indication of, you can't, can't really compact it?
That's correct. You have to get down deep.
Compaction rate, right.
That's correct.
Well, you, you taking it out, and I noticed you bringing stone in and replacing it with stone, or?
That's what the majority of the cost is, is what you replace it with. So either a geotextual fabric for an underlayment, and then you backfill it with either rip wrap or ABC stone, which is the crusher run you see on roads, and that's how you get your compaction. And what we're seeing now is, um, BLE, uh, is allowing them, in, in certain areas, like where they're putting the job trailer, for instance, um, to, to use some of the soil that's coming from the classroom pad, instead of rock, which will help save some money. So it's going to be all this, not so much of this and more of that. So you have to use the unit prices until we come to a, the final number to see what the, so the state construction wouldn't let us do a change order, so we have to do a field order, basically.
The procedure's a little bit different with the community college, because we approve the change order contingent on state construction office approval as well.
Four signatures instead of three.
Okay, so, we'll bear that in mind as we go through. This is, they will, the state construction office for community college projects will have to approve this as well. Any other questions or comments? If not, then would entertain a motion that, uh, the project change order as described at the community college, uh, for the college public training facility project, in, in an amount not to exceed $94,000 be approved?
Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. And Julie, we have a budget amendment to go with this?
Yes, I've got a budget amendment to go with this. I've taken the, um, contingency that was in the project. This is, uh, capital project contingency, reduced it 94,000, and increased the line item for the construction 94,000.
How much is the contingency initially?
The contingency now is 140,313. There is a little bit of difference in the contingency that the state is looking at, because when we were made aware of this situation earlier, I had already put some of that money into the construction line item. However, what we have done as far as our purchase order is exactly the contract amount. So I'm tracking this change order or field order through a budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions, Julie? If not, then would entertain a motion that the budget amendment as presented be approved?
So move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, for the 50th time, I believe.
I was going to know, how many times have we talked?
I, I don't know, but, uh, it's, it's a lot. But, uh, we'll move to the supplemental agreement for the Blue Ridge Heritage Trail signage program.
Believe me, I feel your pain. Um, good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for allowing us to come back one more time, and, um, request the approval of the supplemental agreement. This one is for marketing purposes. Uh, there were some overage time that the gentleman who did all of our design work and creative work on the brochure I brought last time, plus the kiosks, plus the website, it ate a lot more of his time than he had originally estimated. And, uh, we also are going to be, we've asked, been asked by the, um, the state to put in battery backups in those kiosks, because one of the first things that happened when one of the new kiosks went in, they had a brownout up in, um, Matt Mars Hill. And so to protect the equipment, to protect the, you know, to make sure that it's ongoing service, uh, that's part of this, um, agreement, this supplemental agreement. And hopefully I won't have to see you again. But don't count on it.
Uh, just for the folks watching at home, this is, um, this project, the Blue Ridge Heritage Trail Signage Program, is funded through, uh, the Federal, uh, Highway Administration. Uh, it's a grant, uh, but Haywood County is acting as the facilitator.
The fiscal agent, and, um, I just wanted to make sure you all know that you're being well, um, represented on any materials that we have. And, and I know you got this on your email, but this is another invitation, you know, the good old-fashioned kind that's in print, to our event, the real kickoff event next week on the 25th of February. It will be at the Interstate 85 South, um, Welcome Center. And we chose that one because it's closest to Raleigh, and we really want some of those boys to come over here. So, anyway, here's your invitation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, then would entertain a motion that the supplemental agreement for Blue Ridge Heritage Trail signage program as presented be approved?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Dale Burris, our Facilities and Maintenance Director, requesting approval of a contract between Haywood County and John Bergen Construction for the EMS facility.
Good evening. I'll make this quick and painless. On January the nineteenth, Board Commissioners awarded the project to John Bergen Construction LLC as the lowest responsible responsive bidder and in a negotiated amount of one million nine hundred and ninety thousand. And we were able to work with Mr. Bergen. He was able to work with his subcontractors and we were actually able to get the project. We were a little bit below that, but we, we wanted to stay within that range. So, Julie and I worked with him several times and exchanged multiple emails and we finally got the project down to where it was within what the Commissioners actually requested.
Yeah, we've had several approvals already of, of this. This is just the final approval of the actual contract?
This approval of the contract. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any questions of Dale? If not, then would entertain a motion that the contract between Haywood County and John Bergen Construction in the amount of one million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the Haywood County Emergency Services Emergency Management Facility be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and I'm, and I'm glad that a local contractor got.
Yeah. Okay, we, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. And we have Julie Davis again.
Me again. What I have in front of you now is a capital project ordinance. Since we have the project set and we have the contractor contracted, we're putting this in the budget. We have closed on the loan, the two-point-one million dollar loan last week and what I'm showing here is a two-point-two-five-oh budget and that includes, for this project, a hundred and forty-five thousand for architects and engineers, the one-point-nine-nine million dollar contract for the, for the construction, financing costs of ninety-five hundred dollars, initial equipment of ten thousand and contingency of ninety-five thousand five hundred. And this is coming from a two-point-one million dollar loan as well as a hundred and fifty thousand that we have budgeted this year that we're transferring into this project.
Okay. Any questions of Julie? If not, would entertain a motion that the capital project ordinance as presented be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, we'll finish up with three items from Ira Dove, our county manager. Ira?
Yes, and these all include appointments to various boards. The first is to request the approval of the appointment of two members to the Greenway Advisory Council. These members' applications are attached. Martha Bradley, who is a young lawyer, she actually spoke to you previously about the sign matter for the county. And Jan Grossman is, has served on several boards in Orange County in here and is the other appointee to the Haywood Greenway Advisory Council.
Okay. If there's no questions of Ira, then I would entertain a motion that Jan Grossman and Martha Bradley be appointed to the Greenway Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, Ira?
Next, we received from Region A, a request to appoint three members to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Betty Ferguson, Eileen Irvin, and Linda Webb are the persons recommended by the Region A Commission to fill the slots for the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee.
Okay. These are reappointments, correct?
Yes, as two of them are reappointments. Betty Jo Coleman and Jean Willis are reappointments. For the next round, no, these would not be reappointments for the Nursing Home Committee. They are reappointments, yes.
Okay. All right, then would entertain a motion that the appointments as described for the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care be approved?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ira, finish up if you would, please.
Yes, my apologies on the, reading the wrong line on the last one. In regards to this, this is for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee and Betty Jo Coleman and Jean Willis would be the ones recommended for that.
Okay. If there's no questions, then would entertain a motion that the appointments to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care be approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Is there any other business for the board? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.